We would invite all who we care to then join us in the recitation of the Lord's Prayer followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thy will be the kingdom and the power and glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council meeting is called to order. Please remain standing before I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Give your seat please. Vote call please.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin, here.
Just before we get to the motion to dispense for the reading of the journal, at this point on the record, Mr. Geis is not here this evening. He's on vacation. And Mr. Easter is attending to an urgent family matter that arose earlier this evening. So that is reason for his absence. I will now entertain a motion to dispense for the reading of the journal from May 15, 2023.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, Mr. Robinson, and a second by Mr. Martin, to dispense for the reading of the journal from May 15, 2023. Discussion. Vote call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
The motion passes. Now come to the matter of public comment. If you don't have any public comment, we'd like to make a call. The council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comments to the city council this evening.
Mayor, I received communication last week, a phone call with Pastor Garland Harvey, J.R. Harvey, about the Blue Rose Mission. There is information about that here in the agenda packet, and this would be a good time for him to come to the podium and share his requests with council.
Thank you guys for giving me a second of your time. I am Garland Harvey. I'm the director of Blue Rose Mission. And I contacted Garland Gates. And my question for the council this evening is that there is a fee that has to be paid for the city of Shelby whenever any kind of construction or something is going on. And it's a nominal fee, it's like $10. And I called Mr. Geis and asked him if there's a way to have that fee waived for Blue Rose Mission. I'm the director. It's a very small mission. We have a very small budget, so I'm trying to cut anything out that I can get cut out, okay? He said he was unable to do that. And then when I spoke to Mr. Gates, he said, you know, that that was something that you guys would have to take up if it was going to be able to be waived or not. So we, Blue Rose Mission is, our job is to go out, and we fix homes for people that can't afford to get them fixed themselves. Or we do repairs on homes in the case of what's going on right now. We're building a ramp for a person out on Broadway. And so in order to do that, I have to go through the city of Shelby, and then we also have to go through the county. And I do not wish to circumvent that system whatsoever, nor do I wish to circumvent the system of inspections. It's just that after you start piling a lot of fees on, I have five different ramps that need to be built, or are going to try to get built this year. And, you know, just for the one ramp, I'm looking at over $300 worth of fees through all the different agencies. So that's why I'm inquiring if that fee can be waived.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, back in the 1980s, it was common practice for the city council to waive fees for not-for-profit agencies. You know, I can't think of anything specific that comes to mind. I didn't search those records, but indeed it was common practice. Back then, of course, the city of Shelby had its own building department. And it wasn't just zoning, but it was also building permits and things like that. So there is precedence for this. Quite honestly, I think that Blue Rose Mission can use their $10 more than the city of Shelby can. So, Mayor, I move that council waive the fee for a conditional zoning permit for a ramp at 207 Broadway.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts that council waive the fee for a conditional zoning permit for a ramp.
For a ramp at 207 Broadway.
At ramp at 207 Broadway. All right. Is that motion understood? All right. And the discussion? Mr. Robb?
Just a question for Mr. Harvey.
Yes, sir.
Is the county willing to waive the building permit fee?
I, I'm working on that, sir, as we speak. I have reached out to some city councilmen in Mansfield to speak to them. And tomorrow, once I'm done with work, I'm going to go see if I can find someone who is a county commissioner to speak to. Your guess is as good as mine. And I'm hoping they do because they're very expensive.
If you can't get that accomplished, call me.
Yes, sir. And you will be one of my first calls, I promise.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Vote call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Welcome. Any further public comment for the city council? You've come to say your name and address and make your comments, councilman.
My name is Ray Lynch. In little one of the sixth West Smiley Avenue. It's the corner of Smiley and Oost. And the traffic where the crossing guard is right there. And we have an issue out there as far as speeding. We also have an issue that people don't always pay attention to the traffic, the crossing guard. In fact, the other morning, she was walking across with a sign up, and the lady went right straight through. And, you know, basically, that street and that intersection right there, or that crosswalk, you know, we don't have another place in town like that where we have our kids cross. And it seems like we can't control the 20 mile an hour speed limit when it's in existence during school. And we sure can't control the 25 mile an hour speed limit that gets on Smiley. The other night, I would bet that one girl, her car was probably going 45, maybe even 50. They pay no attention. And someday, we're going to have a real problem. We're going to have a bad accident. Simply because people don't pay attention and we don't enforce the law. And the sign that says 20 miles an hour, if you're headed west, if you go to look at it, there's a big tree limb sticks down there from a house, a private. And it's kind of angled away. That's a small sign, but people know it. I think I've only seen one ticket given out there this year. And that was not too long after school started. And it's not just during the school hours. People can't cross there. You know, they stand there and wait. People are supposed to stop. If you're in the walkway, then they don't. So most people just have to stand there and wait until there's no traffic, and they'll go cross. Kids, they'll stop and look both ways, and they'll run across. So I'm just bringing that to your attention because, like I said, I hate to see somebody get hurt. And if they get hurt, I'm afraid it's going to be serious. And it's very simple, just get people to obey the traffic. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Chief calls on, we have a conversation later. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports from standing special committees. Community and economic development committee, Councilman McGlocklin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did meet for just a few minutes, and I do not have anything to report to the council this time.
You may know that Ms. Griffin is also on vacation this week, so she is usually our spokesperson in that committee meeting, so we'll look forward to more at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. McGlocklin. Public works and general operations committee, Councilman Robb.
I would defer to Councilman Roberts. I was in attendance at the meeting. And I want to apologize publicly to Councilman Roberts for not giving him warning that I wouldn't be there.
Joe and I, we did not meet. Joe didn't have anything really to talk about, so we just, the press wasn't coming, and so we just didn't know him.
Move forward then to parking committee. The ad hoc parking committee, Councilman Roberts. And that committee also did not meet by notation. That's correct, okay. Sidewalk, the ad hoc sidewalk committee, Councilman Martin. I think we all did.
We did. Well, I note here. We met twice. We met on May 24th, and we also met again on June 1st, both at 5:00 P.M. We are in the, call it the investigative phase. We are looking at, to recap, kind of what our mission is there. We're looking at safety situations for sidewalks inside the city of Shelby, and also our charter ordinances to see if they need change. Of course, a lot of that's going to come in deliberative phase of this operation. So we are meeting again June 7th at 2:00 P.M. And we hope to have a report, a finalized report to council around Labor Day. So if there are any other questions, I'll entertain those. But things are going well with the committee.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions from Mr. Martin regarding his report?
We'll move forward then to reports of city officials. My report is very brief this evening. Since the last meeting, I was out of the office for four days and otherwise occupied with typical mayoral duties. It was a delight, of course, to partake in the Memorial Day parade, which I think the teacher for doing a wonderful job of organizing, and I think it was well attended. Also, I think you probably have senior packets, my letter of report from the Board of Revision and Assessments. That public meeting was held on May 15, 2023. So that is in your packets. But other than that, that is my report for this evening. I don't know if you have any comments or questions to bring in in regard to my report. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move that the report of the Board of Revision and Assessments dated May 16, 2023, be received and placed on file.
Second. We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts that the report from the Board of Revision and Assessments dated May 16, 2023, be received and placed on file. Discussion? Vote call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
The motion passes. Thank you. Move forward then to the report from Brian Crum, the director.
Thank you, sir. I did get to spend a few days as our acting mayor. I did have a parade, but I was the only one who showed up, so it's kind of a bummer. Thankfully, it was a very quiet few days. And I was actually off a couple of days after that. The only, well, a couple of things. I don't have the exact numbers on me, but tax collections for May were a tinge less than last year as well. So we're still down, which I'm still cautiously optimistic that we'll reach our projections for appropriations on the tax collection. Speaking of the income tax department, we do have a job posting for an income tax clerk. One of our clerks has retired later in the year, but we want to get a jump on it because you don't want to throw somebody in an income tax clerk position six weeks before tax season. So if you know anybody who likes numbers, please encourage them to reach out to me and chat, or go on our website for notifications. That's sort of our report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? All right, thank you, Mr. Crum. Of course, Mr. Easter, as I mentioned, is not here. Mr. Geis is not here as well. New business have you brought before council this evening? Anything under the category of new business?
Hearing none, moving forward to unfinished business. Future use of main street fire stations, I mentioned, I would be giving periodic reports in this regard. I did have a conversation with Mr. Geis. We're still using the municipal purposes for storage of, I guess you could call municipal furniture, the outdoor furniture that will be used in the Black Fork Commons area. So believe it or not, we're short on space across the city for that. So for the next little while, that'll be the use, but we'll take another look at that in another three months here. Labor consultants, we did narrow it down from a field of six to firms. We have inquired for some further information from both of those, and I receive that information as of today. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to have another round of evaluations at the end of this week, and then give clear direction of, through our labor consultants, legal advisor will be in the future for Shelby. So that process is moving along well. The Black Fork ditch petition, I don't have anything new to report other than the fact that I did receive a communication from Commissioner Beer that he did receive the legal opinion, the full speech legal opinion, and he was working his way through that. So that's the last I've heard of this petition.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, would you request a copy of that and forward that to, at least to this council member? I'm sure that my colleagues might would like to see it as well.
Sure. Sure will. Is there any other unfinished business that you brought before council this evening? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, just, I'm going to go back to this, the Board of Revision and Assessments and the proposed vacation of what's commonly called the Weber Alley. Of course, the charter is very clear that we can't proceed to vacate the alley because the Board of Revision has not recommending it. So the process has stopped. I might, the, I don't know whether it's a question or concern that the alley will not be vacated. It is still a public alley. But it's being occupied, a portion is being occupied as if it were vacated. I guess, you know, one can't have it both ways. Now, I think this, the person who is occupying the business did want it vacated. But it seems to me that either it is vacated and that the adjoining proprietors can do whatever they want with it, or it's not vacated and therefore should not be activated. I don't know how it's being used. I don't want to make any allegations. But we have very clear laws that one cannot consume alcohol on a public way. Now, again, I have better things to do late at night than go down there and watch what's going on in Weber Alley. But that, either it is or it isn't.
Understood. I'll look into that further and try to get back, that's constantly with the response.
Okay, thank you.
Any other unfinished business that you brought before council this evening? All right, let's move forward to the decision.
Ordinance number 14, 2023, amending substitute ordinance number one, 2020, establishing wages for department heads and other non-certified employees.
Moving on, ordinance, we got a start reading. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the third reading of ordinance number 14, 2023. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move the council go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to make the executive session for the purpose所read. Discussion. Vote call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
The motion passes. Council goes into executive session at 7:21.
Thank you so much for that.
Generally welcome.
You guys take it.
30 minutes. It's 30 minute window there. 30 minutes.
12.
I feel a little tired. I might get tired. It'd be short.
See, that's one of the things. It's kind of important. You have high school, then you have grade school. But then you have the preschool. Then the walking most part. She was at some, a grand or something.
Yeah. So. So those times, we discussed that. We didn't know where she was. So we had. They don't, they don't, for the speed.
I've seen.
How are you?
Like before the school starts, people are driving through the lines. So.
Good to work, yeah, right, exactly.
Is he a college?
No. It's something. Sometimes it'll come out of mind. Well, I know. Well. I'm a freshman. I have a microphone. I love that one. A few years now.
Yeah, we can do science, but we can't do science. It's just pretend about these ones. Just basketball.
It's just a schedule for. I don't get why people don't understand that crosswalks. They think that's the size of the school.
I graduated from that.
It doesn't. We used to walk to the basketball games.
Sure.
Start from, you know, the main bird down to the field. And I finished it. We stand there.
That's somebody. Mm-hmm. Sure.
That's a big part of that.
Sure.
Reduction in. But I don't think, but it's a constant pressure. Yeah. Stakes are hard. I can't sleep a lot here. The new route is also on Stakes. So that road is kind of like five trucks. But I understand we don't. It's also killing people. Yeah. And studied it here. I think Warren Jones. Most of the five trucks. Warren Jones is a retro light though. Has, it's most of it. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's four. Curvy as. Sure. It's also an issue. It's a risk. It's anticipated. It's anticipated that cross. So I'll get some money. I'll come around to the flags and sound it. I wonder if San Francisco schools would have any.
So did you?
It was the production by. Generally, this kind of thing. Use my camera. Pose. The, I also hope. Sometimes I'm staying around at the station. Usually Thursdays and Fridays. Stay a bit after that. My schedule shifts. I wind my thing during the week. Usually. I believe it's on my day recording. It concerns I do this morning. I guess I just shift around and then when it's sports season, I think it's all the way to stream a game or something.
Before it's good.
Recently, I did. When I started doing this, it was right after September.
There you go.
Yes. There's a lot of maintenance stuff. Covering the couple of landings. Those court days he was covering some.
All right. Always the. For the square. That's what we lost.
The camera working. Learning the editing software my way around that. So, yeah, it is. If not, you did. Cut it, kill it, piece of scissors, it's all on a it's all on the computer with little chunks of video that he.
That's what.
And the cutting room floor is more colorful than the screen now.
It's. Mm-hmm.
Everything's all digital now, so.
Which is recently paid.
Certainly sweets up the process, I tell you what.
Right.
Oh, yeah, the everything that you record. Saves a file, even if you snip it out in your little timeline or whatever. So they're full files.
Well, we have. Record. Right. Yeah. It's under. That's.
Because. Times we have different versions.
Mm-hmm. Do the. That's the machinery down that way. That's. No, but we. The sidewalks right next. They serve around. They were. And the side. It took me. Twenty years.
And even. The same. These days are. This one's. Fun. So. Yeah. This is an actually fully functional. H P.
Mm-hmm.
My first camera that I got for myself was a little camcorder. As long as my phone is. And that was what I did. When I was starting college, yes. Those two pages. It's like.
So it is.
They do have.
Yeah, that's a tough situation. Baseball.
Tape camera. Sitting around my basement someplace.
Oh, yeah.
And it's not even the full size videotapes, the little ones that. Dad herself. I have one of those. My dad. Gown. Baby. Size. I think it still works if once you have it plugged into the wall. Don't know if that's worth the.
Yeah. Yeah. To all of those. My brother, actually.
So I did. I told. I said.
Yes. Mm-hmm. It's something. It's.
Guess what goes along with this?
My mom, I think. Why do I use a movie? I don't.
I don't. Or anything.
Visualizing on the G I S.
Upgrade a format of video. It's all digital. I don't know how to do that. If I had. I think have.
Six again. No, he told me.
They know. Publishing. Cause we transfer our old game tapes. Push it out.
My best.
My boss is. Sorry, son. Go in and get.
Well, yeah.
Tape games from. Well, this this seems like our immediate digitize.
I still.
Side base or. Look back to like ninety-five or something. I didn't put it there.
That's a tough one. Yeah.
Yeah, we were putting things on tape. In two thousand.
My son. She should be right. She's not in the.
There was one that I found because it's sitting around that was just labeled the number.
Mm-hmm. Clones.
And I was like, huh? It turned out it was a truck interview somewhere.
Yep.
Some. Some attempt. That had its leg. That some people have too. Like the person who does this. Right. But this was from one of our.
Sidewalks. Doesn't have sidewalks.
So, no, it is. We have telephones. We get each year. One of our first ones. The late nineties. This was from that. It was just some side tape that then also been recorded also like a. Please force magazine or something. Over. It was. It was. Find that tape just sitting uncutting that down anything else. And it was just labeled clowns. Huh? Right.
Well, the other thing I did is get some dogs. That's what you. That's what you. Kids will walk on the side of the street. There's. So you can't. Forget that. That's not funny. Another thing with you and my dog. Well, it's. I had a thing about that. Or. It's a big. It's a big crowd down. It was like. Nine years old. It's out here. There's sometimes. The officials. That's not. It's kind of. And. Some sort of. Should be part of that. January. Should be a little. All the way down. Oh, is it? Oh, yeah. Oh, just nine years old. We have some.
I have. Interactive airplanes.
Yeah. Sometimes. Oh, yeah. They little.
The prosecuting face.
The undisputed ones. Oh, yeah. I say.
That makes it look.
Yes. Yeah. It's not at work.
Not that I remember anything of that time in the.
Yeah, no.
But I was.
Right.
Learning how to stand up, so.
Well, yeah. Lot of.
Nice.
Stuff. What happens?
Yeah, I did.
Oh. It's.
It's usually not in the middle of the meeting. Um, I've. Trying to make sure we go to executive session at the end of the meeting. It's actually.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I'm sure, yeah. Yeah, you have to be. The rain again. For all days. I agree.
Who wants to. Need it all. Then. Sometimes.
Two kids.
That we get that. Diet protection and the. The fire station.
Sure.
It didn't end up getting talked about. They say. They say. Random important tracks. You look. They're.
That's right.
Fire station where I saw the street driving. You know, I'm thinking. For me. Supposed to drive. Decycle. Like. That's a tough one.
It is. I agree. Yeah. And the. The school.
It's kind of.
With that school. Dresses in. With that.
Small building.
He he. Schools.
Oh. My. Something. Engine station. I call.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right. Call him. Call him.
A kid.
We just. You have. He's.
I'm sure. I'm sure. They could. So. I know. He's. Oh, yeah. Good. It's good. Rare, I think. Those are good stockings.
I think. Yeah. But think of this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. Again.
People are screening.
Yeah. How you think?
People are in sets of like forty people coming up. Grab a ladder. Or send forty people. Water. Thirty seconds of the bucket going in through the window of this building.
Takes a pretty special. That would be upon upon that either, too, right?
Okay, yeah, cause there's two people on the ladder, then one person in the building. And the bucket up.
It's a bit special.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, I did my first bush hogging in the field.
Did you?
Yeah.
Multi-look. It has to be like five gallon buckets that they can get out of there.
One more. And.
Carrying.
That's them with the lack of brand probably all.
I sold that one. My parents.
Oh, man, they're amazing.
Setting out.
That's awesome.
And so.
Did you see his picture of that?
It was. Hot water out there. We have. We have.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
My. It's. That's nice.
Yeah. Still learn a lot.
Oh, I. Yeah. Yeah, it was. We were. Places just after. I did. Just give.
I did.
Have a couple sips.
Yeah.
I do. Much better. Much better.
Happy.
Got home. Cut.
Awful. That's that's a good one. He's using six degrees.
Right? And. So trying to look through what we have. This is. This is Jesus.
Okay.
It was.
I think I know. I think I know where you're talking about. There's like the hides and properties. There wasn't really any limits. That's. Yeah.
Get access in front. It's just.
Yeah.
They reply to some. This. Hmm. Sign for the bio. You want something? Do you biology? She's hard. She's. I need. This is. And. So.
Okay. So help was. Would you please clarify? Yeah.
See. Later. Oh, God.
That's right. Oh, my God. Hmm. Well, I do remember also saying that you don't necessarily have to take the meat off. You can just leave them there if you want.
Yeah.
And. Well, they discos. Now, what's their plan that they've done their purpose.
Right. I don't know. This was. They're funding. They have. Thank you. Now, he says. I was. That's. I was. I said. I'm sure. This.
How did he say? She's a lady. Was. Forty. It was. Charlie. Oh. I didn't. That's. Ninety-five just was a four foot. Tiller.
Yeah.
I really. Yeah. But. No, I want. I do. Right.
Eighty-nine. Charity.
Right.
So. Maybe. This fall. You can try to play.
Yeah. Well, it's not. Late August. September. For the first half of the field behind with that December playing on the other half. That one doesn't want it to.
Be something.
Yeah. That's. What she told me.
For the gum?
Yes, what she told me. She said something about the snow path on it where it pushes into the ground.
Okay.
Yeah. I tell you, it's not done as well as the stuff that I planned it. It looks like.
Marge. Frosted. That's the. I guess. Pushing it.
Um. I'm still waiting to see what that one's gonna do. I mean, I've got a lot of that like purple work, I guess I call it, like, over there. Uh, but that's kind of native around here. I have a bunch of that out there anyways.
Yeah. We got a lot much as well. Red code. Actually, it's kind of sick. Personally, I don't like. Like.
Yeah. Yeah. That just comes up.
Yeah. Be like.
Yeah. It's just. It's good stuff.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, I was just out today after work. Had a whole. Turned over the limbs. Monocropsey and my moms. And I just took the baggy bag to pile off of listening. Yeah. And don't do so the guys don't have to mess with it. And. First of all, we're all just out there. I mean, that's everywhere. There's a ton of it. I couldn't believe it when I was out there.
Yeah. There's. The air. Cable. Cable. They water it. So. The people.
Yeah.
That's just. Just. Dirt. Some of it. Camera.
Oh, yeah. It's what's wrong with it.
Absolutely. This would be. Yeah. So. Or. It's. I said. It's. Not. Any others. That's. I mean. Red.